We will start with the roll call, Suzanne.
Levy?
Here.
Carr?
Here.
Case? Harvey?
Here.
Labar?
Here.
Sonier? Sawyer?
Here.
Thank you. I just want to mention for the record that Councilman Sonier and Councilmember Case did not pledge allegiance, and then Councilmember Sonier will be dead.
Great. Thank you very much. If you'll all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll move on to 3A and ceremonies, presentations, and appointments, and we've got a great thing to celebrate tonight, and I'll turn it over to our Chief of Police. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. If I get Commander Jim Halloran to come up to the podium, we're going to do this together. So tonight is going to be recognizing Jim Halloran's 28 years with the City of Woodland Park, and before that, he had a pretty good career with the Air Force, and so he's given a total of 43 years since August of 1976, between his federal time and his time to the City of Woodland Park. So quite a long time. I like to tease him. I was one year old when he started serving our country. He doesn't like that. But I also want to recognize his wife, Kim. So together, they've raised a family here. Their son Sean has gone through the whole school system here. He recently finished the police academy, and I know that being a police officer's wife is nothing but easy, especially when you're being on-call. Even though you retired last year, his phone goes off and you have to wake up at the same time. So thank you for everything you've gone through, Kim, over the years. And I just wanted to say a few things about Jim. He's had quite the career with the city, and when you have to actually ask somebody to type up some of the stuff that he's done, and it's two pages long, and it's pretty significant things. He started in Reserve Office here in 1991. Shortly thereafter, he became a paid police officer. He did help serve the search warrants and the arrest warrants in the Iron murder case. Was trained as a deer officer and filled in when available. Spent a lot of time on bicycle patrol back in the day. Assisted in a number of residential burglary investigations that resulted in multiple arrests and interrupted an attempted bombing of a police department here. Worked on locating the suspect in Deputy Brett Holloway's murder. Worked on the domestic violence emergency response team. Worked as a patrol sergeant and located Jesse James Hollywood. And also helped interview an individual that was accused of assisting the fugitive. Has worked with the Salute to American Veterans since it started, right? Yep, since it started. Helped oversee the billing of the police department where we are currently at. That happened back in about 1999, 2000, when we finally moved in there. He was the on-duty patrol sergeant when we captured the Texas Seven. He was responsible for all of our police operations during the Hayman Fire, to include the manning patrol operations and preparation of the evacuation of our city. Responsible for all of our operations during the Waldo Canyon Fire. He wrote our emergency operations plan, has done a lot of our active shooter training, also helped us conduct our first active shooter training at the middle school. Worked on our Reserve Officer Program, wrote our Canine Program policy. He has done a great job running our department program, our training program over the years, and he was selected as Trainer of the Year in 2012 by the Colorado Information Analysis Center, and he's also the Terrorism Liaison Officer. He oversaw the Vectra Bank robbery investigation, and this case was also tied to a number of cases in Colorado Springs. He worked hand-in-hand with the Sheriff's Office at the High Chateau Fire, was the on-scene commander in the Frazee Ranch investigation. And when we were down at the landfill, Jim spent every single day down there. He was the first guy there, the last guy to leave, and showed you what a true leader is. And so that's something you just can't train into somebody. It comes from the heart. And so, on a different note, I'm going to miss a couple of things about Jim, okay? So he hasn't figured out that his office is like a megaphone, so when he's in there yelling at his TV, or his computer, or his phone, I can hear everything that's going on. And probably the biggest things that he's found joy in is his dollar store rat that he managed to buy and placed all over the police department. And every time somebody would walk by, the motion sensor would go off, and it would scare the heck out of him. So that's one of the things he's going to be remembered for. But, you know, an agency isn't great because of the agency itself. It's the people that are there. He's been a great public servant. He's given 43 years of his life to public service, and I know he's looking forward to hanging out in his pool and spending more time with his wife until she gets tired of him. And it's a great thing, and it's been a great honor serving with you, and I just want to thank you for all the time that you've given us. So, thank you, Jim.
I know you've got a couple of words to say.
Well, I've thrown them out twice. The only thing I... This is my honor, no? Okay. The thing is, I'd like to thank you all for honoring me. It's a pleasure. The thing is, in all the 43 years, it's the people that you're going to miss. And some of us kicked in doors together and are not here anymore. And that's going to be hard to get over. And I'll never forget some of the people who are no longer with us, and Suzanne knows who I'm talking about. We've lost a few. But I appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Thank you. One second.
As part of the city, I just want to give a couple tokens of thanks to Jim and his wife as well. One of the things I want to say is that, you know, just kind of echo what Miles talked about earlier, in that the way that you performed and the way that, you know, in terms of the landfill search, we've only known each other for about 11 months now, but I'll tell you, I was really impressed with, you know, you didn't flinch. That was a huge responsibility for the city and for the family, right? And I think we put 100% into that, and the fact that you were down there every day doing it. It was a tough environment, and I think anybody that went down there, we all, a lot of us went down there and saw it. I was thoroughly impressed. I just want to thank you for what you've done for the city. I know that you're getting ready to take on some full-time fly fishing, so the city has something in here for you as well for fly fishing, so I really appreciate it, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks.
I'd like to just say something real quick as well. I've worked with Jim now for over 15 years, but we're not just colleagues and coworkers, we're also friends. We're personal friends. We get together socially. But when they were still living up here in Woodland Park, we attend the same church together. And I know a whole nother side of Jim that Chief DeYoung didn't speak about. He is a lot of fun. I've had tremendous laughs with him. One quick little time I'd like to talk about is, we were invited to a birthday party for our friend, and the theme for the birthday party was the 90s? The 80s? So the theme for the birthday party was the 80s, and so you had to dress up in an 80s theme. And so we, myself, my husband Jim, Kim, and some other friends dressed up as the village people. But not only did we dress up as the village people, we practiced before the party, and we came out and we danced, all of us, to the YMCA. We did the moves. You should have seen Jim. I was dressed up, I was the police officer for the YMCA, and your custom was?
I was a biker.
The biker. Your custom was?
The caber.
Yeah, and you should have seen us perform. You're probably all sorry you missed that. My husband...
He was a construction worker.
My husband was the construction worker. But we've had so many fun times, and there's a whole nother side to Jim, and I look forward to continue to spending time with you guys and enjoying fun times again. So thank you.
I'll turn that away. You know, I'm not sure the mayor's pin is the right thing for you at this point, but it just gives me an opportunity to represent all of us, really. And, you know, we don't know anything about police work, except those two guys in the back. But what we do know, what I know, is, you know, your mom would probably say it's not what you do, right? It's how you do it. And for me, and I came up here in 91, same time you started, I think, and Jim Rocker, one of my relatives, was here, and so we go kind of way back, even though we never worked together.
Well, actually, we met you, Jim and I did. There was an alarm when we came up.
I remember. Yeah, the place was burning down in the first month. Anyway, it's how you've done things, it's how you've represented our community, you know, with the smile on your face when it's right and when it's not, always there. And I'm guessing that every criminal that you've dealt with, if they were honest, would say the same thing. And so we appreciate all your time, and on behalf of everyone here in our entire community, there's a mayor's pin for you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 3B and Appointments to the Charter Review Committee. A little background, we opened up the Charter Review. We're going to start meeting here shortly, and we had five applicants for what is theoretically four positions. So Carol's going to lead this charge for us, and I just want a little council discussion on where we should go. Should we accept all five? And there's some downsides, there's some upside. I hate to turn people away, but Carol, I'll let you lead this discussion.
As everyone knows, we did a charter review in 2015, one had not been accomplished prior to that until, I think the last date was 2007. We had seven members on the last review committee. A couple came in towards the end of, or towards the middle part. I think we got you out when we started. I think seven is a manageable number, three council members and four citizens. But the most important point is, those would be voting members. These will be public meetings. They will be posted. We can have input from anyone, to include folks that live outside of the city limits. There's no problem with that. But I would prefer to keep the number on the committee at seven. And furthermore, the decisions that are made by that committee go nowhere except to the council. So ultimately, it will be the council that will vote on our initiatives. I'd like to keep it at four.
To what you said, what's the downside of keeping it at five?
Have an even number, and be no tiebreaker.
Val had thought on that.
Well, yeah, I like, the mayor, hate to turn people away when they volunteer, because God knows, there's a lot of us volunteers that were overstressed. And my thought was that even if we do have an even number, we have a 4-4, if we have an issue that's a 4-4 tie, then it comes to council anyway, comes forward. So that would be, I'm not going to fall on my sword or anything over it, but if there's eight, and we have a 4-4 tie on some issue that would come to the council anyway, which is seven, and that's simply my thought. There's, I'm not going to...
Well, and the real question, for me, we've got five great applicants. But what if we had seven, or what if we had nine? Do we end up with 12? You know what I mean? You've got to draw the line somewhere. So I get what you're saying, Carol. I tend to think, myself, that I'd like to approve all five of these people, myself. Noel, what do you think? Hillary? Jason, what do we need to do? Do we need a resolution to?
We need to amend the resolution. The resolution called for four citizens.
If you don't mind, Mayor, may I answer that question?
Please.
Oh, it's a simple amendment that council can vote on this evening. You had passed on August 1st Resolution Number 845, calling for four citizens at large. So it's just a quick amendment that through a vote, I can change the resolution, count the desires.
If I could make one more recommendation. If city council is concerned about a specific, like a tie vote, I talked to Jason about it. I believe it's okay if you wanted to make one of the three staff members that will be at everyone a voting member. If you wanted to, I could be a voting member to help break the tie. It could be Suzanne or Jason as well. Jason's really there for most of the advice, but drafting, but you can do that.
Add to that, I did talk to someone yesterday that wanted to be on the review committee but couldn't make the time commitment. So I'm wondering if we go a little further and talk about the time commitment, how it's going to work, how many months, and maybe that, maybe one of the five applicants couldn't commit to the time, and that would reduce us back to four.
Well, let me say, we did have a discussion with all of them.
We did.
Well, they know that it's a four-month commitment. Twice a month is when the intent is to meet. I think we would do it, we generally feel like it's going to happen within the normal work week, I believe, in that it would likely happen in the evenings. There was a couple restrictions, just like you stated. Several individuals didn't apply because they felt like their other obligations wouldn't allow them. So that's, I mean...
All right. I was just trying to narrow down the field a little bit more. I wasn't aware that you've already addressed that.
No, I didn't. I can only compare it to what happened in 2015. And we met for nearly, we met every month for a year. But at that time, it was new territory for all of us in terms of, you know, what did we want to address in the Charter Review? And I had an initiative that really caused that particular review committee to get started, and that was to address tiebreakers for appointments. But once we met as a committee, we realized that it was a great opportunity to go ahead and do a little more deep dive review of certain sections. So we met every month for a year. A couple months, we met twice. One month, we only met once. So, yeah, it's a time commitment. But that's based on what we did in 2015. You know, I have, what I have now on our agenda to look at first are simply those housekeeping initiatives that we decided not to put on the ballot in 2016. I don't think that they're particularly controversial. I think it'll give, if we go through those in the first month, it'll give folks on the committee an opportunity to see how the process works. And then if there are other initiatives above and beyond, I think there's six or seven that we'll be looking at, then they'll have their sea legs, I want to call it that. I have no problem with taking all five. My preference, of course, would be the four, but if that's what the council, and I agree with Val. I don't want to turn away any volunteers. I mean, I'm just overwhelmed that we had five applicants, so that's great. So if you want me to make the motion?
Love you too.
Move that we make the committee five for the citizens at large.
Okay, so just for the public record, you are making a motion to amend Resolution Number 845, changing it from four citizens at large to five.
Correct.
Thank you.
And a second. Any other conversation? We got one from Noel. Counsel, all good? Suzanne?
Okay, let's take a quick vote on that. Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five, zero.
Great. What I'd like to do, I see four out of the five applicants here today, and I'm going to call you up one at a time. I'd just like you to introduce yourselves for some of us that may or may not know you, and just give us about a minute as to why you're here today. Stephanie, I'm looking right at you, so why don't you start for us? Stephanie Alfieri.
My name is Stephanie Alfieri, 402 Forest Edge Lane, Woodland Park. Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, and citizens. For me, the Charter is the foundation that our city is built on, and that is, as most of you know, a huge love of mine. It may not seem normal that most people would want to dive into that and become more knowledgeable about it, but for me, if I can become more familiar with it, more than I already am to some extent, and help serve the city at the same time, it's win-win.
Great.
Any questions?
Thanks.
No.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. Thanks for your commitment. Appreciate it. Catherine Perry?
Hello. Catherine Perry, 330 Pondrosa Court in Woodland Park. And I think I know every one of you through some community involvement through the years. And I've had a lot of background serving on boards and committees, and am currently not volunteering in any capacity anywhere, so why not? And I would like to be a collaborator in this project. And like Stephanie, I think it's an opportunity to understand the inner workings of our city better for the future.
Sounds good. Thanks, Catherine. Thank you. Okay, Sarah Horwood?
Hi, my name's Sarah Horwood, and I've always had an interest in local government. I haven't had the opportunity to get involved here, but I was involved when I lived up in New Hampshire, working for the governor's office. I never participated in a Charter Review, but I think it's a great opportunity to actually understand how the local government works, and actually be able to provide my input and my expertise. A part of my job is to review regulations and provide updates and make sure doctors are following federal regulations, but I enjoy this type of activities where groups of people work together to make updates to processes. And, yeah, and I look forward to working in this committee.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. Bob Carlson? Is that you?
Bob Carlson, 1155 Windflower Lane, Woodland Park. Yes, I was interested in being on the Charter Review Committee because for the last time, last review in '15, I was a city council member at the time, and so as Carol said, we have some, in a sense, unfinished business, and I would just like to clean things up.
Great.
Any questions?
Thanks, Bob. Thank you. Okay.
Suzanne, well, these members don't have to be sworn in, do they?
They do. I have an oath of office for them. I'd like to, Mayor, can you please talk about the fifth member that's not here?
I will. I was going to do that next. Darwin Akarado, who most of you have heard of or know, very active in our community, is also one of the applicants, and so consequently, he is now on the Charter Review Committee. Val?
Yeah, he's absent for very legitimate reasons, so I appreciate the council's indulgence and...
Yeah? No problem. I'll say this to those applicants who now are going to be part of this committee. My experience, because I got to be part of it a little bit in 2015, the greatest part about it is the leadership that Carol Harvey provides, and it'll be organized, you won't waste time, you'll get things done, and really make a difference for the community. And so, thanks to you all, and I'll turn her over to Suzanne, and she can get everybody sworn in.
I'm sorry, just one comment. I would recommend that all of you read the Charter. I've done it several times. I know it's an enormous task, but there's a lot of things in there that are kind of interesting about how we do business here. Before we get in our first meeting, I assume we're going to have materials for people, but they're all digital, they're all online. I welcome you to ask our chair any questions in advance of the first meeting. She's very knowledgeable in this, and like Neil said, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor said, she runs a real tight meeting, and you'll be happy about that issue. But please read the Charter beforehand.
And very quickly, we will have some hard copy products made available for the committee members. And as we've already discussed, we'll probably do two meetings a month until it's time for us to bring all of our recommendations to the council. And understand that our end goal is ballot initiatives. We had, I want to say, seven ballot initiatives in 2016. One of those initiatives was defeated, and then another one that got defeated, I think it was because it fell after, on the ballot itself, fell after the one that I assumed would be defeated. And I think people had ballot fatigue. So keep that in mind as committee members. As I mentioned, we've got six or seven housekeeping tasks that I want us to look at at first. But I'm as guilty as any voter out there. If I see too many ballot questions, I usually tune them out after a couple. So do keep that in mind. The hard copy products that we'll provide to you at the first meeting, and I'll need to get with our attorney and city manager to figure out how we're going to work out the schedule for September, will be a copy of our Charter. Also, a couple of charters that the city attorney and I believe are really good examples. And most importantly, the best examples are current and relevant and short. A Charter can be two pages if we want it to be. Ours is not. Ours is several pages. But we will provide you a copy of the city Charter, but you can certainly go online and look at it before our first meeting. And you guys know how to get ahold of me. I don't Facebook, but I've got a phone and I've got an email account.
And she's retired. She actually is, she'll call you right back, now. Carol, do you think it might make sense to also include some of the things we spoke about last time but never got to the ballot?
Yes, that'll be included in the...
In the hard copy?
Yes.
Great.
Do we have, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I hear we have maybe a possible change in personnel from the council? Yes, no? Oh, all right, all right.
And one other housekeeping matter. We assume that these are the five folks that'll be taking those five positions, but we need to make sure that's a motion of council to make them, appoint them.
We'll do that next.
I move to approve the slate of five applicants to be on the Charter Review Committee.
Second. Thank you. Is that okay, Suzanne?
Yeah, I'm going to take a vote.
Thank you.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five, zero.
I knew we were going to take a vote. I just wanted to make sure the motion was okay.
We need to specify the names.
She'll put it in.
So, Mr. Mayor, I was going to give my position to Councilman Labar, Councilwoman Labar, if that's okay with the rest of the council?
We have to vote on it, don't we?
Yeah. I don't remember even voting on us being on the, we did.
Did on the first meeting after we get elected.
I don't want to, oh my goodness. You can't remember, you got voted on.
I don't remember that.
I move that we accept the resignation of Councilman Sawyer on the Charter Review Committee, and instead substitute Councilman Labar as that member of the committee.
I second that, as long as she agrees that she wants to...
That's fine.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Suzanne?
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five, zero.
Thanks, Hillary.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on. Yes, ma'am. You want to?
Swear a man.
All at once?
Yes, we'll do it all at once.
All four? How are you going to manage Darwin?
I'll swear him in. He'll come see me.
Okay. Great.
There you go. You know where he is, right?
Yeah.
Now you get to do your lawyer stuff.
Oh, Carl, look at you swearing. Where do you suppose this lady's from with the axe? Can you tell? I'm sure he'll be impressed. I remember you. Don't you think? Don't you think?
Thank you. Congratulations.
I was thinking about the whole codebook that this thing, not just. I know, I know. I was thinking, because I've read the whole thing. Well, I mean, just when I had two sections I hadn't come in. Same with you and planning commissioner.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Suse.
Yeah.
Okay. I was just waiting for you.
Oh, thank you.
Move on to additions, deletions, and corrections.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening, we have two deletions to tonight's city council agenda. The first is 10A, under the adoption of strategic plan. We're going to remove that from the agenda this evening. As council knows, we had a work session prior to the council meeting this evening. The city manager reviewed the strategic plans, asked for some feedback, and we will be having a vote on adopting that on our special meeting on August 22nd. So I'd like to remove that. And then the second item we'd like to remove, because Councilmember Case is not here, we would like full council to be here for discussion on 10B, which is the discussion of a council liaison to the DDA. So in respect for her not being here, we'd like to remove that.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions, concerns? If not, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. On tonight's consent calendar, we have two items. The first item being the August 1st city council meeting minutes and the second item being the July 2019 statement of expenditures.
Okay, counsel, we can take them one at a time. If anyone has any questions, if not, call for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
LeBarre?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item number six, public comment on items not on the agenda. I don't have anybody signed up tonight, but that doesn't preclude anybody from coming forward. If you would have anything to say, please indicate so and we'll bring you forward. Question? Please do.
Bob Volpe, 109 Coraline Street, Woodland Park. Who are the council members on the committee to review the charter?
The three sitting.
The three? Okay. That's all.
Thank you, sir.
Harvey's the chair. Councilmember Harvey.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna move on quickly now. No unfinished businesses, no ordinances on initial posting, no public hearings, no new business, at least 10A and B, and we'll move on to 10C and Noel Sawyer.
Read that.
Are you gonna read it into the record?
I'm gonna read it into the record.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the town of Monument and the city of Fountain for leading the way on opposing Colorado Senate Bill 42. Special thanks to council member Sharon Thompson of Fountain and Monument Mayor Wilson for presenting these resolutions to their communities, each passed 7-0. In front of you, there are several documents. One showing the Electoral College results going back 32 elections and the other showing the most recent election results by county, not state. As you can clearly see, that the election results sway like a pendulum from one party to the next over the last 124 years. This shows that the Electoral College has been proven to work. The map showing each county results from the last election clearly shows that the majority of the counties are represented in red and few counties are in blue. This map is very important as to why the Electoral College was created and the US popular vote will eliminate states' power in electing a president. Some interesting facts and perspectives. The United States contains over 3,113 counties and the county equivalents in the 50 states. In the last election, approximately 2,626 counties voted red and only 487 voted blue, or about 84% of the geographic United States voted red. However, blue won 88 of the 100 largest counties. That allowed blue to win the popular vote with 66 million and red with only 63 million. That is a difference of 3 million votes. So I ask the question, how does 487 counties out of 3,113 represent the country? Let's look at more numbers. Without these 88 largest counties, blue would have lost by 11.5 million votes. Red would have 63 million and blue would have 55 million. Let's put that last statement in perspective. For example, LA County, which is a blue county alone, has a population of 10 million. That's more than the combined population of 10 entire states. Maine, New Hampshire, Rhode Island, Montana, Delaware, South Dakota, Alaska, North Dakota, Vermont, and Wyoming together have a total population of just over 9 million. With the popular vote concept, these states would have no reason to even participate in the presidential election and have no say in the regional popularity of the candidate that would be best to represent their state. The founding fathers wanted to make sure that a president had popularity across the United States and for a very good reason. The founding fathers started with a specific criteria when creating the Electoral College. This one should open your eyes. The founding father, it should, the criteria stated, it should produce presidents of national stature. A purely regional executive could tear the country apart, either by his election or by policies favoring some parts of the country at the expense of others. Colorado has a constitutional duty to choose a method consistent with the Electoral College's purpose and design. The popular vote method is not consistent with any constitutional method and allows other states to determine the direction of Colorado voters. Let me repeat that. Allows other states to determine the direction of the Colorado voters. The founding fathers created the Electoral College to make sure we have a president that represents every citizen across the United States. Colorado Senate Bill 42 is bad for Colorado and it's bad for the United States of America. I ask my fellow council members to join me in passing this resolution opposing this Colorado Senate Bill 42. Thank you. God bless Colorado and the United States of America. I can go ahead and read this resolution. It's the first one I've written, so it's kind of challenging. Resolution 846, Series 2019, a resolution opposing Colorado Senate Bill 19-042, an attempt to elect the president by popular vote and replace the Electoral College. Whereas the founding fathers of the United States of America created the Electoral College to give every sovereign state an opportunity, regardless of size, included in electing the president of the United States. And whereas Colorado Senate Bill 1942 was created and voted into law to replace the current Colorado participation in the United States Electoral College to a popular vote system. And whereas Colorado Senate Bill 19-42 would permanently change the text of the Colorado Constitution, it would devalue the small states' interests that the founders of our nation sought to protect. And whereas Colorado Senate Bill 19-42 would allow the presidential candidate with the most combined votes of all US states to receive Colorado's nine Electoral College votes. And whereas Colorado Senate Bill 19-42 would take the voice away from the smaller populated states and give power to the larger, more populated states. And whereas, under the Colorado Constitution, states would select electorals in accordance with the sentiments of the citizens of their state, Colorado, not to be undermined by the larger states. Whereas this system would disregard the popular vote results in Colorado or even what our General Assembly may desire. Now, therefore, the city of Woodland Park City Council opposes Colorado Senate Bill 1942 and strongly urges the voters of Colorado to preserve our constitutional rights in terms of the Presidential Electoral College and to preserve the rights afforded all citizens by the Constitution of the United States.
Should be sure that says Senate Bill 42, not 1942?
Well, 19's the year. 19-042.
Okay. When you said 1942, I just wanted to make it clear.
I don't remember that year. And I'd like to go over these printouts that you're not seeing. So what I have is, these are printouts of the Electoral College results going back to 1888. And it's really interesting to look at because you can see how the voting swings like a pendulum from red to blue, back to red, back to blue. So the Electoral College has worked. It's worked for, was that 32 elections? 33 elections now? So I go to this map. This is the counties. So you can see, most of the United States is red. California, right here, has some blue, Florida, lower Texas, maybe Ohio, New York. So you can see all the red, but these small blue states somehow had the popular vote by, what, 3 million votes? So we're going to determine our president based on the popular vote of just these small counties, or these counties that have the most votes. And that's why the popular vote is not gonna work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just so everyone understands, Senate Bill 42 has been passed.
Yes.
By the Colorado Congress and signed by the governor. So this is just a resolution in opposition of that post-bill being signed. And so if we have a motion, Noel, if you want to just go ahead and make a motion to approve Resolution 846?
Motion, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 846 opposing Senate Bill 19-42.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? Suzanne?
Levy?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Absolutely, yes.
LeBarre?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks, Noel, for bringing that forward. Okay, we'll move on to reports. And mayor's reports, we'll start with some events tomorrow and every Friday, 8 to 1. Woodland Park Farmers Market in Memorial Park, supposed to be a beautiful day tomorrow, so hopefully we see a lot of you there. Thursday, August 15th through the 18th, from 9 to 5, the Rock Gym and Jewelry Show at the Youth Pass Saddle Club. Looks to me like they have a record showing already. They've had trailers there all week. So it should be a great weekend for them. Saturday also, this coming Saturday, 8 to 10, the Annual Salute to American Veterans Rally from Woodland Park to Cripple Creek. That's a motorcycle rally. Tuesday, August 20th, from 5:30 to 7, Chamber Business After Hours. This month is at Caldwell Banker. And Thursday, September 5th, 11:30 to 1, Chamber Lunch and Learn, Healing Birth Trauma at the Youth Pass Cultural Center. That's September 5th. A couple of items coming up that you might put on your calendar. Certainly 9/11, there'll be a number of events. One will be at 9 o'clock at Lyons Park. I know they'll have an event at the school also, I believe, that day at the high school. So keep open for that announcement. Saturday, September 7th, which is a couple of weeks away, is the citywide garage sale. And also the Cruise Above the Clouds at Memorial Park is also September 7th, which is a great event. One other announcement, I had the leader from BOSI's, which is the organization that manages our special ed kids in our high school and our middle school. Anyway, and we sat and chatted about opportunities for any businesses or groups, it could be nonprofits, that would be interested in having someone not quite as fortunate as me or you to come and help you out. They would always have a handler with them. And so it's probably a one to two-hour commitment for them, unpaid, insured, no issues in that regard, but trying to integrate these kids into the community the best we can. So if anybody would like to take part in that, you can call me and I will get you in connection with the right person. But it's a great program. I know I'm gonna have one help dishwash at the Swiss. I've done this for years. Smurf will call you. Maybe that might work for you, I'm not sure. Tell you got one there already. Good, good. So anyway, great program. If anyone would like to be involved in that, please let me know. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I noticed one thing you, in modesty, didn't mention, which is Daybreak had some interesting things going on.
Yeah, we did.
Would you like to mention?
Well, they had, I'm not sure exactly, because they always have interesting things going on. They had a, they had night golf as a fundraiser at the golf course this past Saturday. There was about 30 people there playing golf in, literally in the middle of the night with lights on the balls. And I don't know how they do it, but people were having a great time. It wasn't middle of the night. Sorry, Sally, I'll get in trouble for that. But that's one thing. What else? Am I missing something?
It's all right. There's a couple of other things, but I appreciate.
Go ahead. My wife, my wife will be happy.
I was expecting you to say them, so I didn't write them down. But anyway, I saw them posted on Facebook and they're doing a great job. I'm thrilled with the senior population assistance that we have going on in the county of Daybreak, Teller Senior Coalition. There was another one that came up today. It was on Facebook. I'd never heard of it and I feel bad about that. But we've got an aging population and, not me, of course, but, right. We seem to have some very good resources coming into the county to help. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
And for those of you who were not here at the beginning of the meeting, we, at 5 o'clock this afternoon, we did have a deer management task force meeting. Two subcommittees working on both lethal and non-lethal approaches to managing our deer herd here in Woodland Park. Both groups are doing really good research. The intent of the task force is to present a management plan, a consolidated management plan to the city council on September 19th. Both subcommittees will present their options and a way ahead to be put into one document around the, I think I asked them to have it ready by the 6th of September. Once we consolidate those and clean up the actual plan, that will be made public on the city website, hopefully by the 13th of September. So we will do a presentation to city council on the 19th of September. And the objective by having it on the 19th of September is that there will be some approaches, some options for dealing with our herd here in town that may be included in the 2020 budget. And that'll give the council opportunity to keep that in consideration as we go through the budget process for 2020. But great effort by a group of folks that know their stuff. We have the experts on this task force and I'm very. We have the experts on this task force, and I'm very pleased with their work. That's all I have.
Great leadership, Carol. Thank you. Hillary?
I just wanted to mention the 2019 Light of Hope Teller fundraiser for CASA. That's the court-appointed special advocates for children. It's a breakfast that they have on September twenty-fifth from seven-thirty to eight-thirty in the morning. They do need RSVPs by September twelfth. If you have any questions, you can contact me. My name and number are easy to find, or email. Or you can also contact Jill Cheatham at CASA. And if you need her information, just find me, and I'll get it to you. It's a breakfast fundraiser, but it doesn't cost you anything to go. You just get to attend, have a light breakfast, learn about CASA, learn about volunteer opportunities or sponsorship. And I'm a CASA volunteer, and it's been a really great experience. It's a very valuable system that they have in the courts for children. And I know that all of the council members got an invitation, and I hope that you'll attend and support them. So, thanks.
Hillary, thank you. Thanks for your work with CASA. It's a great organization. Councilman Sounier, welcome, sir.
Thank you. Veteran rally, obviously, events going on up in Cripple Creek, honoring the vets. Vets, join in. We sit at the beginning of the gateway to the gem and mineral fields of Colorado. We have a gem and mineral show taking place in town. They have some great vendors there and interested specimens and jewelry to buy. And for those who are interested, on August twenty-fourth, the Big Tenet Event, Republican Party out of Sour Dough Ranch. That'll be a nice event. Hope to see you guys out there. But until then, until we see each other again, you can say, have a happy night. Enjoy yourselves.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Sawyer?
All right. Let's talk Parks and Rec. We actually haven't had a meeting since April. So we had one last night. We didn't have enough to even have a quorum, so we talked about everything. It was kind of nice. So I'm just going to get into it. I got a cheat sheet here, and I got some amazing things that Park and Rec's been doing for the last few months. And it's kind of a hidden gem, and we don't give it enough credit, and all the things that Cindy and her department do in the community. Mayor's Cup. I guess I didn't hear much about that, but I will tell you, it was our best mayor cup ever. Four hundred and fifty-eight participants. That's because we're part of this Brewer series, where a bunch of people that like to drink like to run also, I guess. So I made the recommendation that maybe we should participate in another series and maybe have a different, another run at another time of the year. It brings a lot of people up here. If anybody remembers Saturday, I believe it was Saturday morning, if you looked at the downtown, it was packed with people for a few hours. And I think there were some other events going on. So I think it really brings people up here. They're tired, they don't want to go home, they want to stay up here and, I guess, drink We need volunteers on the Pike's, or the Park and Rec Board. We don't have enough. We need about two more. I asked my wife. She said yes. We'll see how that goes. Let's see, let's go over some statistics. As of last year, with the program participations from 2018 to 2019, last year we had four hundred and forty-three participants. That included all the programs. This year, we had six hundred and eleven. So we're up about twenty percent, which is great. And soccer was up eleven percent, which is kind of where I'm at. I think that's great. Soccer program is really blossoming here in Woodland Park. Let's see, Memorial Park, we have thirty-six reservations during the month of July, which is, that's like two a day practically. So that's nice. Ute Pass Cultural Center hosted four notable events. UPC Open House, Woodland Music Series, Wedding Reception, and a Cowboy Legacy Concert. Anybody go to that? I didn't. Let's see, Aquatic Center is doing well. Last year, 2018, we sold four thousand passes. That includes daily, three months, annual pass, punch cards. This year, so far, we've sold three thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven. So that's good. We're scheduled to beat last year's numbers. I'm not going to go over the revenue numbers. They look good. I'll just tell you that. Let's see, what else do we have here? I think that's really the highlights. We have actually, are going to postpone all Park and Rec meetings until January because we're waiting for people to apply. So if we get a couple more volunteers, then maybe we'll reschedule the meetings. But if you have any questions, please call Park and Rec and talk to them directly. And I'm sure they can help you out and get you the information you need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on. He's got his microphone ready. He might have a report to for us tonight.
Nothing further to add.
Nothing further to add. Okay. Move on to Darren.
All right. I'm just going to add one more brag on the Parks and Rec Department because you didn't mention the revenues and the expenditures for Ute Pass Cultural Center in the recent report, in the monthly report. But the hiring of Nicole Evans as our event coordinator, there has turned out to be a really big win for us. If you saw in the monthly report, at this point, we're currently twenty thousand dollars ahead of last year's revenues, and we're seventy thousand below last year's expenditures. We're doing really well in terms of managing Ute Pass Cultural Center. That's a result of really her approach to, really proactive approach to booking new events and outreach and really customer service perspective that she has with the event. I also want to say that she won her age group in the Mayor's Cup this year as well. So she's representing the city really well. In addition to that, you've probably seen a lot of different new marketing for the Woodland Aquatic Center in terms of signage and everything. I'm not going to talk about a whole lot of it right now because I want Karen to come and present what she's accomplished in the last, you know, last six months. It's been pretty significant, and I think you'll see the results of that in increased usage of the Woodland Aquatic Center as well. So she'll be here at the next meeting to talk about that. I'll talk about a couple other things, a couple administrative requirements or things that we need to take care of that have been, that have come to our attention. Didn't make them as agenda items, but if we can get consensus from City Council, I would appreciate it. The CML Policy Committee is looking for reappointment or appointment of our representative to the CML Policy Committee. The meetings for this policy group will last until February 2020. As you know, Councilwoman Harvey is our current representative. Just by chance, because Jason's so well-known and highly regarded by CML, that Jason Myers is currently our alternate, not by any motion of us, but CML knew him and added him as the alternate on their list. So they just moved him over. As you know, Jason has a lot of experience with CML, but-
They're still listing me as the alternate.
Okay.
Yeah. So, whatever.
So, really odd.
David's kind of an alternate.
But since the expiration of this next group is in February 2020, city staff would recommend continuing Councilwoman Harvey's place on the policy committee if that is acceptable to City Council.
It's acceptable to Carol Harvey.
Okay. If you want to clarify your alternate, too, it sounds like we've got three different alternates. We'd like to be able to name that as well. You don't want it?
Val, would you let, notice that I was on that from CML, so-
It seems like they're selecting, so-
I thought he was it.
Okay.
I don't care.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever. She always goes, so-
I would be glad to have Jason as my alternate, so if I can nominate Jason, I will.
Sounds good, as the alternate. You all right on that, Val?
Okay.
So that's my consensus. We're good.
Thank you.
You have our alternate.
The next issue of business is that my friend, Estes Park City Administrator Frank Lancaster, is retiring in September, and his position is opening up on the small category for the CML Board. And I wanted to ask the City Council, I thought, hopefully, if you would be okay with this, but to approve me as a potential candidate for the CML Board to replace Frank Lancaster on the board. We have to submit it, obviously, and they have to vote, but I'd like to take the opportunity to serve on the CML Board in replacement of Frank.
Val? You do quite a bit of things already. How much impact is it going to be to you? Because, you know-
Correct. There are typically seven to eight meetings a year for the CML Board. So, and one of those meetings is at the CML, the CML Conference itself. I wouldn't be asking if I didn't think I could take on the obligation and still meet my obligations here with the city.
I have to say, too, it's a win for the city to have representation there. Usually, it's the larger metropolises that get the representation. It'd be great to have someone from Woodland Park there.
What's that process look like?
So in September, they'll vote for the new, the small category to replace, in an appointee position, for Frank's position, open position. So I would just need approval or consensus from City Council to send a letter forward to them, getting City Council consensus.
What's up, Carol? Carol Zars. Yeah. I just want to make sure you're not going to overload yourself.
Appreciate it.
It's like we have consensus.
Thank you.
Darren, along that line, there is a CML meeting, district meeting here in September. We're sponsored by them.
Yeah, I guess, we didn't mention that yet, have we?
We have not yet.
Yeah, I've got a couple of announcements, and I'm going to pass off some stuff to our staff for some additional reports. On eight-twenty-three, on the twenty-third of August, there is going to be the ribbon cutting for Pike's Peak Avenue. And so we'll be there. I believe you're going to be there. And we've invited City Council members at DDA to be there for the ribbon cutting for that road. That road is part of the 2015 traffic study recommendation, so we're really excited to see that, in addition to bringing this new business and business opportunity that DDA facilitated to the community. So eight-twenty-three is that day.
That's a week from tomorrow. What time?
At three o'clock in the afternoon.
Three o'clock.
And then, second, the issue that you talked about on nine-four, the city will be hosting, on the September fourth, will be hosting the CML District Meeting, where we'll be presenting a program on our stormwater management plan to the region, and also hosting local elected officials from the region to the city to see the Woodland Aquatic Center and our community and Ute Pass Cultural Center as well. So looking forward to that.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I brought this up before, and I think you answered this already, but I'm interested in all these things migrating to a council calendar or a common calendar. I think you were working on that. How's that going? In other words, all these things you announced would be nice to migrate to a-
It should be on the community calendar.
Correct. That's something probably, as you know, the Chamber hosts a lot of the community events. We are looking at, as City Council approved through a supplementary budget item, to transition our new website to a new, more community-friendly website. And that, as part of that, there is a community-wide or a city-specific calendar that will be on there that we can integrate into City Council dates that you need.
And I'm interested in having automatic alerts for those things. A week out or whatever. Thank you.
Perfect. Lastly, I need to, I wanted to, as you know, SBDC, Small Business Development Center, had discussions with several City Council members and the Chamber. ACHA, the Executive Director for the Pike's Peak Small Business Development Center is, has gained approval to move their development center in a satellite office to the City of Woodland Park for Teller County. We will be hosting that in our cabin off of the trail at seven-ten West Midland Avenue. With that, they will be looking to hire in a part-time administrative assistant to help run the training and consulting that would help local businesses with their challenges. And so as part of that, my intent is to, we've been working really closely with them. One way to help them with that is to make a request to City Council to gain approval for bringing a best and brightest intern into the city next year, in the next, actually the next two years, where that person's primary place of duty would be as the administrative assistant to the Small Business District, Small Business Development Center. And as part of that, DOLA, Department of Local Affairs, funds a large portion of that internship. They fund twenty thousand dollars. Total cost of the intern each year is forty-two thousand. They fund twenty thousand of that every year. We are also getting awarded a grant that will help fund a large portion of it as well. So the other half of the salary would be funded by a grant from another organization, which we'll announce later on. But the position is fully funded through grants. And what I need to do is get City Council approval to send, to send approval, a letter from our City Council for the best and brightest intern to DOLA so that we can get started in the process to interview this person and bring him to be the administrative assistant for SBDC starting one January 2020. So I'd like to open up that, really up the questions to you, just so that, it was kind of short notice that we needed to get a letter of approval from City Council to send them. It will be part of the budget discussion, so this will come back to you for more detail. But I just, I need a letter from City Council just to get the process started with DOLA.
Help us understand a little bit what the responsibilities of that person's going to be.
So the person will coordinate with local businesses here that are requesting consulting or special assistance training, like Lean Sigma Six, where they may have issues with financing or a number of issues that they can, I'll talk to you kind of about what a small business, what the Small Business Development Center does. A part-time administrator for Pike's Peak Small Business Development Center offers business consulting and training that maximizes the economic potential of entrepreneurs within the Pike's Peak Region. Their mission is to help existing and new business grow and prosper. Their goal is, for the Small Business Development Center is to help emerging and existing entrepreneurs gain control of their business operations, provide free guidance, consulting in all aspects of funding and developing a small business. They provide, they strive to help grow and start businesses, and they try to, while they cannot eliminate risk, they work to minimize it with the help of their clients to write comprehensive business plans, conduct financial forecasts, strategize market tactics, applying for funding, and improve their operations. And so they would be, what they do is they coordinate with the businesses, and then they find the business consultants in the region to come and help each one of these businesses to help them through their challenges.
Carol? Sorry?
So help me understand, SBDC will have full-time director or manager in that physical location. The intern would be hired by the city and work for that person?
So there's a couple ways you could go about hiring. They always need an administrative assistant, essentially would be an executive director at the satellite office, so they run the operations of the satellite office. The primary office is down in El Paso County under ACHA, but their satellite office would work directly with the Teller County customers. This person would be the sole person, so the intern is both a graduate student with the University of Colorado, master's of public administration program, and they also work as a generalist to assist the SBDC.
So what is our relationship then with that intern? Would we simply provide the vehicle to get, to pay the individual?
Correct. Since we're a public entity, the- Since we're a public entity, the funds have to come through us, but the grant funds have to come through us, but we, so we would manage the administrative aspect of this intern. The job itself is a part-time position currently. It could expand to a full-time position in the future, but right now, because of the number of clients in Teller County, it's a part-time position. The other, the other 20 hours, let's say, would be working for the city in a capacity. They could assist the city on several of the strategic planning goals that the city has identified for city council, and that includes some of the community engagement and economic development requests that the city council has talked about.
You're asking us two things, to provide that means of administering the position for SBDC.
Correct.
And then, secondly, to potentially pay for the, you know, if it's a 40-hour week, that we would pay for 20 hours of it?
We're not. We're actually, so that what I'm telling you is that we found the grant, the grant funding to pay for the entire salary of the individual for the two, next two years.
Who would be responsible for the day-to-day supervision of this individual?
The primary location of this intern would be with SBDC under ACHA, and then the more flexible hours be working in, on projects for the city, under those, under economic development and under community engagement.
So, they would...
Under...
Under the city, correct. I would be the mentor of the other, whatever, 15, 20 hours a week.
So, I guess, the long question was, who's paying her? Who's paying this intern? But the other question is, are we leasing the building, or that's just going to be office space that we provide?
So, we are providing it in kind to SBDC. They're paying for the utilities. Right now, it's not occupied, as you know. This is an opportunity to help our local businesses, so that's why we're providing the cabin as an in-kind to SBDC.
You know which space he's speaking about.
Right, 710 West, yeah.
The cabin.
Yes.
Yeah, I saw the cabin, yeah.
And if you want to, I know Councilwoman LaBarre and Councilman Carr have participated in the discussions about the SBDC, and have had discussions with ACHA on this as well. So, I don't know if you have any comments about, but you know the intent of it.
Yeah, I just had a question. Did SBDC want this intern to do that, or did they want to open it up as a potential open position?
Well, they're going to, they would help with the, so it would be an interviewed position. They would participate in the interview of the intern. It's a state program. It's called a Carol Shipley, Kathy Shipley Best and Brightest Program. It's been going on for 15 to 20 years. In fact, one of our, one of our directors is a best and brightest intern graduate. Emily is one. So, basically, what it does is it develops interns to be future leaders in local government. And so, this is an opportunity for this individual to, which we have not identified. The university will present the candidates, and DOLA will present the candidates to the city sponsors, will interview them, and it'll be a combined choice on who we bring to the city and SBDC.
Right. But my question was, did you discuss this with SBDC?
Yeah.
And they said, "Yeah, that's a great idea"?
Correct. I spoke to ACHA, and that's, this is a combined decision between us and ACHA.
Okay.
They are, they are, correct. They would be providing some of the funding for the individual.
Right, okay.
Val?
You talk 20 hours part-time, and then you talk city. Now, is the city going to pick up, and this person will be actually a full-time person, but on the full-time side, he's working 20 hours for a small business, and then he's working with the city?
Correct.
Do you just plan and stuff like that? So, this is a 40-hour position?
It is. The internship in general is 40 hours. So, you're correct. And so, the...
So, you're actually two things.
But it's all funded through grants, is what...
Yes.
It is.
You're telling me that 40 hours a week is funded, or only 20 hours?
40 hours is funded.
And we get 20 hours of work out of the individual?
Yes. Because we're the recipients of the DOLA fund.
What happened then, two years?
Well, the internship ends, and they move on, they typically will move on to other positions, either outside of the city. As Emily did, she moved from Salida to Buena Vista after her internship concluded. The one thing that the city might have to pick up is benefits. We don't know. I'll be honest with you, I don't know whether or not the individual will need benefits or not. And so, that's not something I can discern right now, but that would be the one cost the city would have to pick up if they asked for benefits. It could be someone who already has benefits with their family. It could be someone who's already under their family's benefits. So, I can't, I can't tell you right now whether or not benefits would have to be paid out, but their full salary would be paid for through grants, and they would also get $2,000 stipend from DOLA to fund travel and training for them and their own professional development. It's a great program, and it's a well-known program throughout the state.
The benefit package, we should at least know what that cost is going to be during the budget session.
Correct, and I will have that. It could be anywhere from zero to $12,000.
Val?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As usual, I'm worried about slippery slopes with all this stuff. Suddenly, we've got somebody occupying that office, which is great, and they don't seem capable of doing what this intern is doing, I'm guessing, which is a question I have. The other question I have is, why are we getting the EDD? I don't think the council has had that discussion. I think we've had it in the past, and we decided not to. I think it's a question that we really need to talk about in a, not just a council report sort of manner, but in an actual business meeting. And so, I'm worried about the similar things, is once we get into this aspect, and suddenly we've got a whole new, we're expanding our government envelope, and I'm not sure the whole council is aware of where we're going with EDD and/or whether we want to do this. I think it's great that we can have SBDC up here. I think there's some benefits there. We've talked about that in separate meetings, but I'm concerned about the slippery slope, and suddenly, we've got a whole nother position we're funding down the road, including benefits. So, it's not free. It's never free. And that's my concern. I would, I would ask that we have further discussion with the whole council at some point.
I'm not sure what you mean by EDD.
Economic development.
Well, the EDD, what I'm talking about is city council's goals, as you directed in the strategic plan. So, there's been a discussion about, what do we, like, a project, there's projects that city council has directed staff to do, that would be the area focused for this intern on the city, on the city's side. I'm not saying that we're going to develop an economic development department? Is that what you said? Is that what they're, the thought? No, no, not at all. The thought is to accomplish the projects that city council has directed staff to do.
So, real quick question, and this is my understanding of what's going on here. This individual allows small businesses coming into town to sit down and go over everything that needs to be done to bring a business up here, how to get it financed, how to run it, kind of what the chamber does, but these are people that aren't part of the chamber.
The chamber is a part of this discussion, actually. Chamber's been in the meetings, is she here?
No, she left.
She does. So, Deb, Deb has been in the discussions as well with, she was at the meetings with SBDC and ACHA, so she is, this is a combined effort.
Good.
With our local businesses and new businesses. Obviously, chamber deals with existing businesses. This would deal with any emerging entrepreneurs or new businesses coming to the city as well. It's really a win-win for the city.
Yeah, so, it definitely sounds like a win-win, and the fact that the position's paid for two years.
I'm going to say again, I'm going to, I know there's a comment.
Not four.
This is an internship.
Yeah.
There is zero promise that the internship, the intern would remain with the city after two years, and I can have Emily talk about, about her experience, and she moved on from Salida on to Buena Vista afterwards. The hope is that they move on to bigger and greater things as leaders within local government. So, that's really the intent. I don't know if you want to make, because you had an experience for two years.
I mean, it's an experiment. We'll see how it goes. If it's successful, we'll continue it. If it's not, then we'll stop it.
And again, I'll bring, this is really just to bring this forward, just as a spot, we need to get our name in as a sponsor with DOLA. I'll bring this back to city council for the budgeting process, or it'll be officially approved in the budgeting process if city council says that's the case. So, I just, but I need to get the letter to DOLA, so that we can be considered as a sponsor. I have the funding for, I've coordinated the funding for the position for the next two years.
I think that we've got a bit of a suspense here to get that letter in, and I think it is a good opportunity, but I do have concerns that we need to, what are our liability issues with this person? What, if we do have to pay a benefits package, would, all of those things need to be answered. But I would consent to getting the letter in.
And there's no downside there?
No.
Just to get the process started. And then, during the budgets, during the budget season, we'll get all that information, and then, then we'll decide and have that discussion, Val, that you're talking about, and make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, on the city's side, I have some, a job description of sorts for it, but I can, I can have the city council refine that. The intent's really to focus on the goals that city council's identified in the strategic plan. I don't see the position doing other things other than that. There's plenty to do for those goals, as has already been stated by city council.
I'm just going to say one more thing, and I won't say anymore. I see Val's concern is that we've had an economic developer before.
And I recognize that.
Okay, so, just, that's the, that's why the hesitation there a little bit, because we've been down that road before. You know, whether it was successful or not, who knows? But that's, that's why the hesitation, but, you know, if things work out, and it's on a trial basis.
Let me just say that the, in the public, that the intent's not to create a economic development department. This is a two-year internship that will end after two years, and SBDC at that point will lose the benefit of having a full-time employee. They'll have to go out and do, find someone new after that, but they see the value of having a full-time employee who's committed to being in the position for two years. A part-time employee without benefits often will, there's a lot of turnover there, right? And so, we're providing a significant benefit to SBDC by having this fully-paid, grant-funded position for their operations.
So, if we just can get consensus to send the letter, and then we'll talk about it further in budget sessions. Are we good with that?
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm going to turn over a couple of reports. First over to Emily, Finance Director, on the sales tax report, if you have the handouts.
Yes.
It shouldn't be, yeah, we just haven't tried to...
Oh, alright.
Thank you, Suzanne. Good evening, mayor and council.
Emily, I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
Oh, is it not on?
It might be on. You need to talk right into it. It may not be on.
It's on. What? Okay. So, in front of you, you have the tax revenue update. So, the report reflects the city's 3% sales tax revenue and lodging tax received in July 2019 for sales incurred by taxpayers during the month of June 2019. Additionally, sales tax revenue and lodging tax received in July 2019 for sales incurred by taxpayers during the month of June 2019 is also attached, and there was a correction to the June 2019 sales tax and lodging tax numbers for those incurred by taxpayers during the month of May 2019. The updated numbers and charts are attached. So, this was caused by a technical glitch in ADG, and that was corrected, and the error going forward will not occur now that we have identified that. And then, as far as the new business, new or terminated businesses, 24 new business and sales tax licenses were issued or reactivated in July, and only one business terminated or inactivated their business license in July. So, something that's positive to note, the trend is positive going forward. We have, previously, it was 2.06% over last year for sales tax, and it is now 3% over last year's year-to-date for sales tax. And then, if you look at the lodging tax, 2018 was an anomaly, it appears, for June. So, something to note, we are currently looking into a software solution for lodging tax that will not only help with bringing in more lodging revenue and simplify it, but also improve compliance. So, that's something that we're looking at for the 2020 budget. So, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Just like to make a note, I'm sorry, get back to you. We need to seriously look at lodging tax, because this may be an anomaly last year, but we're behind 2017, and we all know why. It's Airbnbs and VRBOs, and those people aren't paying taxes, and we're going to have to, at some point, have the discussion, where are we going to go in this community in that regard? So, obviously, not for today, but it needs to be on our radar.
If I can, I just, Emily has mentioned the software solution. We're looking at several software solutions. Most communities use these, including Green Mountain Falls, who recently has really gotten into the business of lodging and lodging tax. There is, compliance is an issue. And so, this, what the software does, and these businesses do, is they scan the internet, right? And they find the businesses that are out of compliance. It's an excellent, it increases compliance significantly, because there are a number of Airbnbs and VRBOs out there that just, that don't, that aren't paying the, aren't, don't have a business license or aren't paying taxes.
Not collecting taxes.
Correct. And so, in a couple of the scans, we saw, I mean, I would say there was, we were missing probably 2/3 of those that are, that are out there on the, on the internet. And so, we really need to get this business suite in, so that we can start doing a better job of, not say us, but it's, if you don't have these, this type of technology, you really can't find, really can't find these. So, it's something we know we need to improve, and that's why the software suites are something we're recommending for this next 2020 budget. And I'll tell you what, they'll pay for themselves, just for the increased compliance. Another thing we're not doing is we don't have, we don't have business licensing fees for, or lodging licensing fees. It's something that we need to discuss with city council as well.
They don't want a license, because then we know where to get them.
Yeah.
Sorry, Val? Or, I'm sorry, who was?
Well, Val was first.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, I'm very interested in this Rocky Mountain beignets. Are they in or out?
What was that?
That was my neighbor. They are in, and they will be at the farmer's market, as I understand.
And they're at Wheelie Wednesdays. They have a food truck.
Are you doing beignet?
Yeah.
So, I need to get on that.
They're doing beignets, it's my neighbor.
I need an alert on that.
Yes. They were at Back to School tonight, so, middle school.
Okay.
Yeah, anything else for Emily?
Well, I was going to bring up the software for the Airbnb and the Breton Beckfest, and we had an issue, I think, two years ago, where someone was parking the Airbnb, or was parked, the people there were parking incorrectly, and we didn't know it was an Airbnb. So, this is also an opportunity to locate where these are, and if there's issues, we can enforce, enforce code enforcement there.
Correct.
So, it seems like it helps in multiple areas, so I hope we get it sooner than later.
If we can find it, bring it on for, I mean, zero net cost to the city, which it could be, because of the savings in revenue, we can bring it to city council sooner and try to implement it this year.
Oh, download the trial version.
Okay. It's more than that. There is a customer service side to it as well, so it is a company and a contract we'd have to sign with.
Right.
Anything else for Emily? Okay, thank you, Emily.
Thanks, Emily. I'm going to, Ben has a comment, an update for city council on an issue that was brought up about six weeks ago.
So, we spoke to Mr. Smith, Brook Smith, about his concerns with the drainage that goes into the, you know, the Loy Gulch next to the townhomes. And what we did was, we met with him this morning, with my predecessor, Bill Alsbach, Kip, and myself, and we all sat down and went through the methodology that he was concerned about. We addressed his first concern, which was that we were discharging, or the Stoneridge Development had been approved to discharge more than the historic flow into Loy Gulch, and because they're releasing some undetained water while overdetaining above that, and we were able to address those concerns, showing that they met the drainage criteria standards, and that we wanted to make sure that we were doing our due diligence to capture all that runoff, so the net runoff that's into that drainage system has not increased. And then, the other concern he had was if we... And then the other concern he had was if we had reviewed the CFS numbers, that discharge number with FEMA maps, and Bill went through a great history, talking about how the FEMA maps are actually created, and that it's more of a regional approach for FEMA, for Woodland Park itself, rather than all the small sub-basins within the city, and that we could have done the full study and invested a lot of time and energy, money into it, but at FEMA's direction, it wouldn't have changed the floodplain maps, because we would have spent a lot of money, and it would have come out exactly the same. So the numbers that he was referencing are more of a regional approach, whereas when we're reviewing drainage reports, they look at that very specific area. So the numbers can be slightly different, but his main concerns were addressed, that they weren't going to be in a bigger floodplain there, and that we weren't discharging more than the historical flow.
Great.
He was satisfied? Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So he was satisfied with the information that you gave us?
Yeah, he was very satisfied with that, and it was nice to get to speak with him, and it's nice when he can bring some technical knowledge and be able to have that conversation.
But it's very, it's also very nice to be able to talk to him since we have a couple of quality. This is what you have, and obviously, everything is...
Yeah, thanks for taking the time to do that.
Anybody else?
Thanks, Ben.
Ben, thank you.
And last, I just want to have Suzanne to make an, she has an announcement, a couple...
Couple of more events, I'm sorry, there's so many events. Council will recall, I sent an email out earlier this week stating that we were having a council work session on August 22nd. So that's turned from a work session into a council special meeting. So we're going to have that evening, we're going to do your, the council's first work session regarding the budget for 2020, and we're also going to have a special meeting to approve the strategic plan, excuse me. We're going to start at 5 o'clock, and there'll be more information to follow on that.
Tell me how long this meeting is going to be?
I think we're going to plan from 5 to 8:30.
5 to 8:30. Thank you.
And we'll supply food and things to get you through that period of time.
Bathrooms?
Bathrooms, yes. Second event is, you will, council and other people that are in the audience that are on our boards and commissions, and I think that Councilmember Sonier is going to like this a lot. We are having a barbecue that we are going to host for all of our volunteers. The flyer will be coming out, and all of the boards, commissions, council included, and any other volunteers, hopefully the new charter committee members can come. We'll have a picnic in the park, it's 9:10, so September 10th at 5:30, and your city staff will be cooking for you and serving you as volunteers. So we'll put that on your calendar as well.
9:10, 5:30 Memorial Park.
Yes, sir.
Can I get six servings?
You can have as many as you'd like.
For the six different hats.
And then the final thing that I'd like to remind council or tell council about, Darren hasn't even seen this yet, because I got an email on my phone during the meeting. Sam Light, the SIR Sir Attorney, he, the DDA had requested that he come down and do DDA board training. And we thought, not only for the DDA, that we would open it up to other boards and commissions and council members also. He has committed, the state worked with the DDA, that's why we picked it. He has committed to come down on August 27th at 7:30 in the morning. So be looking forward to an email from us talking about the training, the time, and inviting you to attend that.
How long's that meeting, Suzanne?
Probably like a regular DDA, 7:30 to 9:00.
Thank you.
AM.
Got it.
I don't know if I said AM.
Unfortunately. On the 27th.
Yes, sir.
Any questions, council, for Suzanne? Anything else, Suzanne?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Darren? That's it? Okay, no other agenda items. Council, we're going to move into executive session. If I can get a motion and a second, we will vote on that.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Mayor Levy?
Yes.
Can you read?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I will. You want both of them?
Or just the one?
Okay. Pursuant to CRS Section 24-6, dash 402, Sub 4, Sub E, to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators all regarding Second Amendment to DDA Development Agreement.
Thank you. Sonier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LaBar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
Okay, thanks very much. Council, let's try to get started at 8:45 if we could.
This is Noel's resolution. We're, we're, we're signature.
Thank you.
Is there going to be a case being made?
Yes. We'll be upstairs. And, uh, it's going to be hard to record, he's lost it once.
Yeah, he's watching with someone.
Yeah, he did that, he just watched it on YouTube.
How we do that, I'm sorry. So sorry.
It's okay. It's okay. You just, you are.
I'm so sorry.
I'll do it in the morning. No, I know that, are you kidding me? Oh, man.
If I had to take your papers, this intern is going to be in this building by themselves?
They run the, they run the, yeah.
You're alone?
Yeah. They're not letting you in.
No, there's some of these things that, actually...
No? Can you read into the record, please?
Sorry.
Thank you. Do you have electronic?